So we're recording, we've got audio going. Commissioners, you ready to start? Okay. It is 10 o'clock. I will call this meeting to order. The turn of stairs will be ready to the flag. I am suddenly. Okay, let's move into 2.0, which is additions or revisions to the agenda.
Yeah, I'd like to have a update on how bill according to bill two.
During business. Anything else? Okay, let's move into. Thank you. I don't think we're gonna have enough time to get to everyone who has signed up prior to when we need to start the hearing. So what I think we'll do is take correspondence now, then go into the hearing and then go back to public comment. So we'll do correspondence right now. I will note those. So in the packet for this meeting, there is the January 2024. For George report. So that is in there. Folks would like to see it. And then. There is an email from Les Rourke. Regarding the hiring of a county administrator. It's a lengthy one, so folks want to see that. That was also part of the packet. And then, and then a letter that we received on from Judge Patno regarding her continuing legal education requirements. And so as always, if folks aren't interested in reading classes, email or seeing any of those things, they are part of the court's package agents online. And I'm slowing just a little bit because we have three minutes until we need to start the hearing. So I think we'll just pause for a minute. And then we'll go into the hearing.
Make a way. John, we have court at 11:00. And so the only reason we were here is to introduce the justice of the peace and kind of talk a little bit about that.
Sure.
We go first when we get to the point of.
Yeah, you actually, you wanted to do it right now. We could do that because we've got about two minutes. Sure, we can be a minute.
We could do that. Carrie, this is Carrie Hader. She will be the new justice of the peace. She was appointed by Governor Kotek. She will take office June 1st. And we welcome her. We brought Leona Foster, the court administrator, and Kayla Roush, who is the docket clerk. And she, these, these two will be a great support to Carrie. Leona was, was here when I came after Chris Nix. And she's been a steadfast and loyal and wonderful employee, and she's gonna help Carrie tremendously. So we have a training plan in place, a four week training plan. When I trained under Chris Nix, before I took office, I followed her around. I had notebooks full of notes. I gleaned all the information I could from her, went to court, went through everything I possibly could to, to gain all that knowledge. And she has interacted in doing the same thing, which we have supportive law enforcement who's been asking, what is our training plan? There's ride along scheduled with law enforcement. It's very important to learn radar and laser and understand how that functions in order to rule on traffic cases. And she's prepared and ready to do that. She comes with a background of public administration. She was a city recorder. City reporter. She has federal experience, correct?
It's a federal agent and an Oregon licensed tax consultant. I've been a director of operations back in California.
Right. And she's been an Arlington resident for several years.
15 years.
Yeah, so welcome, Carrie.
Yeah, well, congratulations. I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you want to say something as well, you're welcome.
I'm very honored and humbled by the appointment. Looking forward to working with Chris. And I'm gonna do my very best to serve the people of Gillum County and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
That was perfect. We are right at 10:05, so wonderful. That helped fill the space nicely. Welcome aboard. Okay, so we are gonna move into 4.0. Which is hearing to receive public comment on ordinance number 2024-01. Yes, the fiscal year 2024 through 2025, Gillum County Weed Control Special Assessment. This is the time duly set and advertised for a public hearing in the matter of ordinance number 2024-01. And ordinance for Gillum County Weed Control Special Assessment for fiscal year 2024 through 2025. The rate for fiscal year 2024 through 2025 has been proposed at seven cents per acre. Hearings are conducted in accordance with ORS 569.175 through 569.620. This hearing is for the purpose of gathering evidence as to the need for identifying who will benefit from and to take input on the weed, special weed assessment rate. This is a legislative hearing. All those in attendance that wish to testify are asked to sign the attendance sheet, which we have here. And this is the continuation of, of the hearing. We had opened it in Condon two weeks ago, so we are reopening it as of now. And I think we would move in, we heard the staff report during the first part of the hearing. So we will move into public testimony. And Penny, you're the only one on my list, so.
It's so funny because Sky asked me, I laughed because he had to go fix something out on the spring on the freeway. And he goes, go in there and he goes, tell them you're supportive of the weed program. That's why I'm here. Responding to, that's, that's all I really have to say about it.
Opposed to weeds, important, supportive of the weed control program. Was there anyone else who had meant to testify that, that did not sign on their way in? Okay. And let me just double check online as well, really quick. For those online, if you dialed in on your phone and a star six to unmute yourself. Or the lower left hand side of your computer screen, if you're on Zoom. Was there anyone who wanted to provide testimony regarding the weed assessment? Not look like it. Okay. So I will go ahead and close the hearing. The hearing is hereby closed and then we'll move into 4.1. Which is possible first reading of ordinance number 2024-01. The fiscal year 2024 through 2025, Gillum County Weed Control Special Assessment. Commissioners, this is one of those that has to be read twice, at least 13 days apart before adoption.
I moved to have the first reading of ordinance number 2024-01 by title only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we have the first reading of ordinance number 2024-01 by title only. Is there further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. In the county court, the state of Oregon in and for the county of Gillum. Ordinance number 2024-01. In the matter of a special weed assessment within Gillum County for fiscal year 2024 through 2025.
Then we need to do the second one?
Yes.
I moved to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2024 by title only.
Oh, second.
You meant by 2024-01? Yeah, sorry. Clarifying, so that it's been moved and seconded that we accept the first reading of ordinance number 2024-01 by title only. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're gonna go back now into public comment. And I think we will just start, we'll start in the ring first and then, and then there's at least one person who is, who they would like to comment over Zoom. So Dawn Park, you're up first.
Thank you. Good morning. What I wanted to speak about this morning is. Several times Commissioner Shannon has blamed the courthouse employees for the bad morale, toxic work environment. And I worked in the county courthouse for 15 years before retiring. Last year, the morale was very low. So two county courthouse employees came up with the idea of Taco Tuesdays at the Buckhorn. So once a month, we would meet afterward, we would visit. There was no work conversation allowed and just have a good time and talk to each other. Rachel Boyer and Delaney Watkins were among those that attended and we enjoyed their company. The majority of the people leaving worked directly under the judge. Sandy McKay, Lisa Atkins, Teresa Aldrich, Delaney Watkins, Rachel Boyer, and Miranda Reese. Other people that left were fired, were Rachel Weinstein. Marla Davies was fired with malice, meaning she could not collect her unemployment insurance. Marla's rather plucky. She disagreed with this and the unemployment offices reviewed her case and agreed there was no reason to fire her with malice. Getting rid of Teddy was harder. She was in the county clerk's office one day turning in her OICC forms. She returned to her office and was met by Lisa Atkins and Sheriff Betancourt. She was told to retrieve her purse and the sheriff would escort her out of the building, which was rather humiliating. Wicks were spent going through her papers, her files, her work, and nothing was found for which to fire her. So she was brought back in. She was put in Lisa Atkins' office so she could watch over Teddy's shoulder as she worked. Once again, the opportunity to get rid of Teddy came with, quote, restructuring her job. 15 hours a week and no benefits. She had no choice but to leave. So I think really, when it comes to the morale, the toxic situation. That the county court should take a long look in the mirror. I do have one question. Before I left my job. I let Ellen know that I would be available to come back and work, be happy to. I'm certified in all parts of the jobs. So she asked Rachel Boyer to leave me on the books. And Rachel replied to her that she would be unable to leave me on the books. And if there were any question, please contact Liz. So am I still allowed to come back and work at the county courthouse and help out when needed?
Ellen and I've had that conversation and yes.
So I can come back and work?
It's all settled with her.
Okay. And I appreciate that. I was not aware of that, so thank you.
I'd also like to add, Dawn, that you actually never asked me why I was leaving specifically. I would appreciate if you didn't include my name.
And I apologize. I did not mean any harm. Okay? All right.
Marla, and I might add, Delaney Watkins to that list, too. I just wanted to see who was the next one.
I'm here simply to support what Dawn brought up. I know that Dawn came to county court on her break with Ellen's permission to support me after I was fired. And she, you know, I, I didn't commit any type of misconduct as was put in the paperwork. The unemployment office exonerated me completely on that. And. The next day, Ellen is contacted by Liz and asked about getting rid of Dawn. This is. This is what I was told and I, I believe it because the came of a very good source. And if that is the fact, I mean, it's, it, there's just too much bullying, too much. It's just an inappropriate workplace. There's so much malice. And there's also just, people are scared to death for their jobs. It's just not a good work environment. And I would encourage you guys, you could, it's, it was a great place at one point to work at. And I would just encourage you, as Dawn said, look in the mirror. Maybe we could make it better for the county and for the people that work there. Thank you.
Chris? Was that, did you?
That was it. I'm just a little add that I didn't cover. So our budget, I just want to let you know how busy we are. We will have plenty of material for, for Carrie to work with. We have, let's see, I budgeted $225,000 in justice court fines that go directly into the general fund. And that is going to be as of June 30th. So through June 30th. But as of today, we've collected just short of $250,000. So we have to go April, May, and June. So the money correlates to citations, correlates to work, correlates to training. So I'm just letting you know that. Okay? Thank you.
Penny?
So. I'm pretty good at this, but. I'm a little bit worried about what's gonna happen. Like, I know that you guys are in the process of hiring an administrator. And I'm not opposed to that. I think that's actually a really good idea. I just, as a, as a voter, I would like to be represented by, not by somebody's heart, I want somebody who's elected, right? I mean, that's how it's been. Colm Elthabden against change, whatever. But. So I guess I'd just like to say, we're not a poor county. Doesn't mean we should be spending our money crazy either. But I would just like to say that I would like the current court to maybe take a pledge that they. Would not change the duties, officially change the duties or the pay in any of your salaries until the next court would come in and then they can decide that. So that we aren't having a change in the structure of the court in any way, because people were mostly against that. And that's what kind of caused all this. Nobody wants to change in the structure of the court or, and we don't want to discourage anybody who's running, any of our people that's running for judge or county commissioner. But now their pay, their, their duties are gonna be taken away, you know, in the middle of an election cycle. So I guess I'd like a pledge that that's not going to happen. And I think it would also help build people's trust in the court itself if you were, if you guys were to do that. So I guess I'm, I'm asking that. Maybe well, maybe wrong, but I feel like that's an important thing to say. Something I've been wanting to say for a while, so. Thank you for your time.
Lynn, Bob.
Well, today I'd like to talk about housing. The approach our county court has taken is we come up with the grandiose costly ideas and seek expert opinion to justify and help us make these ill-begotten costly ideas come to fruition. Example, the Procter purchase has over $2 million taxpayer money committed to its funding. They have completely ignored the expertise of citizens who live in that community. And we have had no town hall, no committees of citizens to help. You know, there's a lot of experts that you guys have out here. There are voters that could lend their expertise and help resolve issues. I would like an opportunity to state a simple collusion. We have an Arlington well over 20 buildable lots that are shovel ready. They have all the utilities replaced and roads are in. If the county would have taken the same funds committed to the Procter-Boondoggle, instead gave $100,000 in incentive to builders to put a house on each of these lots that are shovel ready. We would have 20 new houses or duplexes available in less than a year. This is the kind of lack of judgment our citizens can no longer afford. We need private partnerships.
I didn't even.
Voting from the court's webpage, not the county webpage, but the court's webpage within the county. Where public comment on agenda items is welcome. When the public portion of the court's last meeting resumed, Judge Farrar asked for additions to the agenda. Commissioner Shannon said he would like to add discussion on court order 2023-01. And two other topics. The court order was scheduled for immediate consideration. Thus making it an agenda item. Public comment on agenda items is welcome. Pat moved to adopt for two new orders and Commissioner Watkins seconded. At this point, there was a motion and a second. Discussion was the next natural step. I sat. As the YouTube video captures with my hand raised. The judges expressed preference in order to be recognized. Remember, public comment on agenda items is welcome. When Commissioner Shannon introduced the topic, he said he'd like discussion. There was none. Those wishing to discuss, let alone understand what was being voted on, were silenced. And a unanimous vote was cast. Public comment on agenda items is welcome. I have been before the courts of Crook County, Jefferson, Waspoke, Sherman, Wheeler, Grant, Morrow. As well as Judge Pryor and Judge Schaefer's Gillum County Court. My appearances were sometimes to commend, to convince, to challenge, and to contradict the court. But I was, without exception, afforded an opportunity to be recognized and to be part of public discussion. I might not agree with what you have to say, but I fought and I will fight for your right to say it. You may not agree with what I have to say, but I'll fight when you deny me that opportunity. And when you deny that opportunity of other people. The right to speak is fundamental and you know it. Public comment on agenda items is welcome. Not. At your last meeting, you neither welcomed nor allowed public comment. In fact, you denied it. You and Steve Allen should not therefore be surprised that recall is continuing.
Um, okay. Steve Schaefer has asked for some time as well. Steve, are you still there? I see your camera's off.
Yes, let me turn my camera back on here so you can see my happy face today. Is it visible? Is that, is that good? All right, yeah. Yes. This is Steve Schaefer. I live at 211 West Pinoyar in Condon. Judge Farrar Campbell, Commissioner Watkins, and Commissioner Shannon, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I want to formally thank you for the action on March 6th that kept probate court in the hands of Gillum County government. We know this was a hard pill for you to swallow, but that's not even as close, that's not even close to the size of the pill you were trying to force down our throat. I, with frontier justice, had one goal and that was to stop or at least slow down the county court from changing our government structure without input from the people. For the record, frontier justice is not a mob. We started this as a small group that felt our, an Oregon revised statute was misused. It grew much larger into a much larger group that consisted of probate attorneys, county councils, past and present DAs, commissioners, and judges from four different counties. All had the same two concerns, misuse of an Oregon revised statute. And, and a change in a county government structure without open hearings, debates, or approval of voters. These people are experienced in county government and all felt that this subject to be, should be worked over, should have at least a year to be worked over. And at the very least, six months, not six weeks and certainly not the six days that the Gillum County Court took. With the rescinding of Order 2023-01, frontier justice's mission is done for now. But I want you to know, we remain prepared for any other actions by this court that ignores the voice of the people. Thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else online that wanted to provide public comment? If you're here on your phone, it's star six to unmute yourself. If you're here on your computer, it's the lower left hand side of your Zoom screen.
Can I ask questions because it's not clear to me without reminding them on that list? I can ask a question. When people make a comment like he did or anybody else. You guys act like you didn't even hear it. And because I'm new to county stuff and I'm new to this county, what do you do with those questions or what do you do with them? I've never hear them discuss. Are they put into the minutes? What happens to those comments from the public?
So we are listening to them. And then I believe they're noted when people have provided public comment. Obviously, we also keep a list of folks who testified, so.
Are they decided upon? Are they ever brought up again?
Depends on the context.
So someone else can answer that for me? Because I see ideas brought up, but. They sound like they're just not, you just don't say anything. And whatever happens to those ideas? I guess that's my question. I don't know. What's supposed to happen to them?
I, I guess that, you know, they're not agenda items to start with. And we're here to do the business of the county.
Okay.
And work through the agenda. If they're to be brought back in another court into an agenda, that's where they are. And if there are issues that the county wants to put, people want to put on the agenda, they can do that.
Oh, so they could, after they've made a comment, they can ask to have it put on the agenda.
They can always ask to have something put on the agenda.
Okay, okay. I didn't know that.
And then.
With some limitations. I would say the first two people talking about personnel issues, that would never be something that we, as an employer, are able to comment on in public comment. So that's why you did not see us respond to.
Yes, and I, I knew that one. But some of the others, when I've been to other court meetings, listen. I haven't always been present, but we've been on Zoom or whatever. And I just never, what happens to those ideas of comment? I would just, somebody said it, but nothing seemed to ever work or happen. So I was just wondering, that's my own information. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any chance I can get on the list?
Yes, you want to, before we move on, come up and sign, please. You would, Lynn, drive off.
Yeah, so actions that we could put on, have to be, that to be put on the agenda. So if we were to ask, would you address in the next meeting the questions and the subjects that were brought up today that we didn't get answers to? How do we get that on the agenda so you guys could have, say, the next meeting, you burn our questions, you don't answer them in court? We don't ever hear about what you think of or what you decided to do to resolve or address any of our questions. So how do I get that specific item on the agenda that next court meeting, you will address the questions? And the thoughts of the citizens that were given to you at this meeting?
So it depends on the subject matter. If it's something the court can take action on and is currently taking action on. Often, public comments are around something that is still to come. So for instance, Penny's comment regarding the compensation for. So for instance, Penny's comment regarding the compensation for elected officials, that will be forthcoming as part of the regular budget process. And so I would expect that the court would weigh that Penny made those comments as it makes those decisions. I've already addressed the personnel. Questions will not be on an agenda, ever. And then in terms of housing, I appreciate your feedback on that. I would just say to you, the projects that we have funded through those grant programs are being driven by community organizations. They are not the court's initiatives. And so if the city of Arlington, for instance, came to us and said, we want to build housing, we would expect that that organization is doing its homework and communicating with the community about that.
Well, you missed my entire point. My point was that there are lots of expert citizens in the building arena. There's committees that could be formed, and that would be your priority as a judge and county commissioner to say, we'd like to have a town hall meeting. This seems to be a very big structural change that we're going to do. So let's have that town hall meeting.
I do believe we have had two work sessions.
Excuse me. And then we would have a chance to have committee members from the community speak, give you expert opinion, explain how the functionality of building is actually done and supposed to just deciding. We didn't have opinions from the experts in the community.
So what I'm hearing is that you possibly have an interest in being heard on that. And what I would say to you is, to Leah's point, the court has had multiple work sessions with the court of Arlington, the city of Arlington, which Denise was at, to talk about the housing projects before they came here. So that would have been the opportunity.
I was there, and I was ignored.
I don't.
Yes, that's true. Absolutely. That's fair. I was there. I told them one of the ways they could resolve this. I told the court director how to do it and what a great approach would be. None of that has ever been listened to or talked about in any of these entities. It's just that.
Well, I think I would just, though, challenge the idea that we haven't provided that opportunity for the public to provide their input. And would once again say that the county itself is not the one that's building the houses. We are Thunder. And so, you know, each of those entities, so when the court is working on a project, they also have public meetings. So I would suggest if you want to get input on the court's project, you would go to the court's meetings. Because that's the appropriate place to do it. Denise, can you, we're kind of getting off of our.
I'll be there. Quick. Yes, today at the economic development meeting that we had with McKenney, housing, a housing authority was actually raised. Maybe a future conversation regarding a housing authority, housing committee, something that focuses a particular group of people to work on this that has non-government ideas. More to building, less to financing.
Okay, um, let's move on. Let's go into consent agenda. Oh, oh, sorry, Dana. I forgot that you had signed in.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Sorry, I got distracted there.
I'm sorry, the lady up here, thank her. Hold on one minute. Raised the issue minutes. Okay, and on March 7th, Leah provided a letter to the editor. And she said everyone should do their own research into these matters instead of making, instead of taking the information on the flyer, ask factual, review, and decide for yourself. You have invited people to check documentation. Now, I have just a couple of examples here. There are more. This one was just regarding Kelly Nonprofit Consulting. By the way, the link on that was disabled, and we weren't able to get the information prior to the February 7th meeting. Okay? Like this is, these are the minutes from February 7th, 2024. Okay, and at that point, you wanted to, you had a motion to hire Kelly Nonprofit Consulting that was going to cost this county over a million dollars over three years. And that was just the cost. That didn't include travel accommodations, me also, whatever. It was going to be quite expensive. Okay? And you brought it to court in a motion. Okay, and what it says at the very end here is Commissioner Shannon would like the process to go through a formal RFP process and brought back to the court at a later date. I want to remind you that it was Denny Newell that stopped that vote. It was Denny Newell that brought up the RFP. And there is nothing in your minutes regarding public comment. That is inaccurate. You know it, and you're all culpable. Okay? It was a member of the public that stopped that vote. And that is not mentioned in the minutes. Okay? So you're invited to check your documentation according to this letter to the editor. Check your documentation. Just understand that it is inaccurate. And all of the information is not provided. I have another example. Okay? In your meeting May 5th, I'm sorry, May 1st, 2019. Okay, it was a listening session. And you have minutes on that listening session to tell a story. Okay, it tells you who was for, who was against. This is from 2019. Okay, there is information here. And it's not verbatim, okay, but you do understand from looking at this that there is a story. There were people for, there were people against. I now have the minutes. It's in here. I'm sorry, I was going to hold off on this. This is from December 6th, 2023. Okay, and this is with regard to a motion in the 2023-01. Okay? And what it says there. During public comment, the county court heard members of the public, including, there is a list of names on here. That's all. You have no pros, you have no cons, you have no information. You have no idea what those people said, what they wanted, what they did. It is not in the minutes, and you are all coupled in this, coupled, all of you. You know you're doing this. You are editing out information, and then you invite the public to check the documents for information. It's not there. All you have in these minutes is a list of names. There's no story. No pros, no cons. You have no idea what we said or why we said it. That is what is in the current minutes. And these minutes were accepted. They were voted on, they were accepted, they were passed, and every woman who knows that the information wasn't in it. And yet you invite people to check the documents. The information is not there. You have no idea what we said or what we wanted. Do you understand?
Can I just make one, and I'll be fine? Because I was in 4H for many years, as was my entire family. And I always thought I would be sergeant of arms or some insignificant office, right? But I do remember when they would bring something up, that we would discuss it. So leaning on my experience of that, that's why I'm confused when nobody says anything. And you know what? I don't get cell phone service at my house. I don't get internet at my house. So I have to walk across the street and use Penny's internet to look things up. Oftentimes, she'll print things off for me, but I guess that's part of my confusion. I don't know where to look. And I, I thought something had to be commented back from the court or brought up at another meeting or something. Okay.
One more thing.
Okay.
Which has very well demonstrated that I had some thoughts and some ideas. And the instant reaction of you, Elizabeth, was to castigate me for not going to the right page or not. You don't listen to what we're trying to tell you. What you do is try to chastise us for not being at the right place or not listening to the right person. You're not listening to us. That is the issue.
Okay, let's move on. We're moving to the consent agenda. I have moved to the consent agenda.
A second.
We moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda, which consists of consider approval of March 6th, 2024 executive session minutes. Consider approval of amendment number 002 to grant agreement number 21-103AC with higher education for leaving commission. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's go into unfinished business. 6.1 was discussion and possible action regarding county administrator recruitment. Commissioners, do you feel if there's anything to discuss on this one, or do you want?
I do not.
To run this back? Bring it back, Leah?
Yeah.
Bring that one back. So we're going to move through that one. The court will not take any action on that. We'll go into 6.2, which is consider approval of assistant to the county administrator position description and salary schedule. Okay, so just in summary, we have received notice from the incumbent finance director and the assistant to the Commissioner's Employee Resources Officer that they will both be resigning from their positions. I will say both have graciously offered to pitch in around their new employers' work schedules, mostly filling in on Fridays and some early mornings and evenings to ensure that everything continues to run smoothly while we are recruiting and onboarding new team members. Both will be transitioning from full-time to part-time status on April 1st. We began recruitment for both positions back on Thursday, March 14th. The initial deadline for applications to come back in is Thursday, April 4th at 5:00 p.m. In particular, the assistant to the commissioners slash employee resources officer, sort of a unique role. This happened before Leah was on the court, but originally, the position was created as just an administrative assistant to the county commissioners. Then we went through recruitment. We found Miranda, who is fabulous, and came to us with an unexpected skill set, which was human resources. And so we were able to modify that job description to really allow Miranda to do both, the administrative work that she does, and then also human resources, which the county also needs. And so that position was, and we said this at the time, sort of melded around the individual that we had, the incumbent that we had in that position. My concern is that finding that skill set is very challenging. And so while we have it open and would encourage anybody who might have that skill set to apply, I also want to be mindful that there just may not be a pool of candidates out there that can meet that need at this point. And with our staff leaving, I think we still need to get moving on actually recruiting and having some new team members joining us in the coming months. So what you have before you is sort of a Plan B, which is it's a straight administrative assistant role. This would be to the county administrator. And I just want to make clear that that intention is to only hire one administrative assistant. It would either be if we get a good candidate that has HR experience, then we would plug them into Miranda's current position. But if the pool of candidates really is better suited to just administrative assistant, we need the flexibility to be able to hire, put them into the position and the pay scale that makes the most sense, depending on what we've got in the candidate pool. And so the proposal before you is a draft position description. This basically mirrors what Miranda's position was originally. And then the pay scale is set at where it's comparable to the other deputies in. So most of the, like the deputy assessor, deputy clerk are all at that pay scale. And so that's how we came up with both of those. Questions about?
The only question I have is that the existing position as it stands today, that Miranda now holds and we're recruiting for, would also have a supervisor, the county administrator, and it's not on that job description?
Correct. So hers we'll have to bring back. The other one we would have to bring back. I just wanted, because of the situation we're finding ourselves in, to get that out as quickly as possible so that we have applications.
We were going to get the other one back and make that same.
Yeah, so if the county administrator is hired, we're actually going to have to go back and update about 20-some position descriptions because the reporting structures are all to county court members. So I would anticipate we would do all of those as one, but we need an administrator on board.
We're in our slot.
Exactly.
You're going to do the administrator first, and then you're going to hire an assistant. I'm just clarifying. That's all.
So the recruitment for the administrator is ongoing, and the hope is that there will be an administrator onboard shortly. What we're doing right now is getting the job descriptions that we can recruit for the support staff that will go underneath that person, with the idea being that while the commissioners are making a decision on the administrator piece, that we're getting applications in. My hope is that if we get an administrator in quickly enough, that that person will be able to hire their team. But so I'm just doing the legwork right now to get those applications to come in so that we're not, usually we advertise for three or four weeks before we start scheduling interviews. So kind of we added that so that we have applications pending, should we have an administrator come onboard here in the next.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, do you have any more questions on this one?
No, I moved to position description and salary schedule and assistance to the county administrator position as presented and direct staff to incorporate the position into the salary schedule for non-represented employees.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the position description and salary schedule for the assistant to the county administrator position as presented and to direct staff to incorporate the position into the salary schedule for non-represented employees. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's go into 6.3. This is discussion and possible action regarding competitive grants programs guidelines. And so with budget season quickly approaching, this is the time that we would normally be opening up the competitive grants program for applications to be funded out of the upcoming fiscal year. And so normally this time of year, we take a quick peek and see if there's anything that we want to adjust. Last year, just as a reminder, we made some significant changes to what we were funding, particularly out of the capital investment and operational support, with the idea being that we are having this more closely aligned with the strategic plan of the court paths, the 2021 through 2026. So we're trying to focus those investments on housing, building childcare options, and doing improvements to infrastructure for industrial lands so that we're, those are ready to be invested in. And then the final one is really gap funding. So for organizations who have gone out, raised 75% of their project and need county funds to come in and close the gap, that we will, we will fund those as well. We've got several community organizations that have various capital projects that don't fit in the housing and childcare and industrial lands sort of sector. So purpose of today is just to put this on and ask, are you happy with where these rank guidelines land? And want to move forward with them? If so, I don't need, I actually don't need any motions from you. I only need a motion from you if you want to change something, since you've already approved these.
I do not have a motion to make.
I do not have a motion to make.
I, I didn't see anything that I thought needed to be looked at, so.
It seems to be doing its job. I mean, there's, yeah, there were several housing projects that came through. I'm excited to see those moving forward. I think that's gonna be great. The childcare stuff, I think, is on target. That's a huge need in the community. And then I think, you know, the grant guidelines themselves say that it's likely that next year's sport then would could expand that back out if they chose to do so. But for the next, at least for this past fiscal year that we're currently in and this upcoming one, the idea was that we would really try to focus investment on these key community priorities and see if we can move the needle on housing and childcare in the short term, so. Okay, well, for those who are interested in applying, I'm hoping to have the applications online and reopened sometime next week. So be on the lookout for those. And then, just as a reminder, the capital, those are gonna continue to be on a rolling basis, so there's no immediate deadline. You have to meet only those who are coming in for operational support, because those go before the budget committee for consideration, so. To come soon. Those will all be on the county's website as well when they're ready. Okay, let's go into six point four. This is discussion regarding Cedar Springs Lane relocation project. How do we want to do this? Do we want multiple chairs up here? Because I think someone was still sitting back there too.
I'm there.
Waste management, and who else is sort of part of that? Let's get some chairs and have them all come up so that they're not in the back of them. All right, you wanna come up? So you're here jointly.
Okay, but that's not our goal from under the conducent use permit.
I know.
Okay, so.
I think you could just say.
I don't care.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I don't want to mess up the national use permit.
Well, there is money. That was the management, too, but I guess some are just.
And I know that, yeah. I think they're just, they're here for their own reasons.
Take it, take it all in. Okay, got it. So I'll maybe just set this stage while we're passing out, well, passing out a term, is that there was a joint work session that was recently filed between the Columbia Ridge Citizens Advisory Committee and the Gillum County Board of Committee about relocating Cedar Springs Lane because of all of the delays that are occurring with the train. This has been a long-going discussion. I think the start of this was, I think, the very start was. Open and all that kind of stuff coming up. And so from what I understand, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong.
I'm gonna recuse myself in the time of the place of the office.
So we'll let the record know that Commissioner Shannon is.
Yeah, here, we can never.
I recuse because my wife is working as a project manager for waste management.
Perfect, thank you.
So Commissioner Shannon has declared a conflict of interest, and so we're accusing himself. Okay, so my understanding is that the recommendation is to move forward. Is that what came out of the road committee?
Yes, to bring it to the county court to either get your support or see which direction we need to go next.
So why don't we walk through? Why don't we walk through the cost, kind of what you guys see as next steps in terms of? I understand, like, there's a private landowner that's involved, that we, we're gonna need to do some land swaps. Is that correct?
Right, well, not, not really land swaps. He, he has some conditions. Most of the conditions are hinged to waste management. He has a, a well that he would like refurbished, I guess, so that he has livestock water. And then he would like to tie up his grazing, the grazing lease on the waste management property as a condition.
And the gravel? And, and the rock?
Well, the rock, yeah, but that's for future.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, on the quarry that we have, that's on his property.
And then a fence.
Well, the fence, but that's part of the project, yes.
Can you walk us through, why don't you walk us through the cost estimates?
Okay, the initial cost estimate I gave was, was me doing the surveying. I actually met with engineering firm out there two weeks ago. They just gave me their rough estimate at half a million dollars to do that. That's to do the land survey, engineering, the, the, all the assessment work, which is the archaeological, the biological, and the environmental assessment work. Give us a set of plans to where we could either go to bid and have a contractor build the project for us, or Gillum County do the project. To spec.
And that's the guy in this email, Dewey?
That's, yeah, but that's for the paving project.
Oh.
That's for the paving project. And, and he just sent me his thing this morning. They're, they're estimating for, to have a contractor build the project at seven million thirty-six thousand two hundred and ten dollars. And that's, that's with the assessment work and all the engineering stuff. And whether, for us to do the work where we already have the rock produced and do the stuff is, is two million seven hundred and seventy-six thousand. Plus, you'd have to add the five hundred thousand to that for for the engineering and their portion of it.
So, yeah, so it'd be two, two point five?
No, it would be three point five, three point two point three, three point three.
Three point three.
Yeah.
But we're talking about that spread over. How, how long, I mean, the surveying work.
The, the surveying stuff.
Phase one.
Phase, phase one, and, and he said would, would roughly take a year.
Okay.
Would take a year. They'd have to go out, do the, they'd do the initial land survey first. Once that was done, then they'd know the footprint. They'd have to go in and do all the, all the assessment work. Once the assessment work was done, there's probably gonna be some mitigation in there, which we'd have to do somewhere else on the project because of those. I call them dry lakes, where, where there's water in there to do that. But it's, it's really pretty simple, but he thought a year before we could break ground. Be ready. And then roughly, I've got it figured as seventy-five working days, so it would be a spring and summer fall project. We wouldn't, we wouldn't do.
So that would start, if you're a year out, then that would be twenty twenty-six?
Yes.
That what we're talking?
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah, that if we got, if we got the go-ahead. Because I couldn't just hire the firm because of the amount of money. We would have to go to bid to have somebody come in to do all of that stuff. I was just lucky enough to get Tennyson, who did the Cedar Springs project for us, to just give me a rough idea.
And a part of the issue that we've come to this is, we know that the site is gonna be in existence for, you know, they're talking another hundred and forty years. And so the trains are already getting longer. There's already reports that there's gonna be eight trains a week. You know, mile-long trains. And it's just an ongoing, how do we make this work and get, and have waste management work for them? Have it work for the, the people who live out there, the people that go in out there, the employees? I mean, there's a lot of factors that work into it, and we're talking a hundred and forty years, so. How do we make it work now? It's only gonna get more expensive to build, for Dewey to build a road. Just seems like maybe now's the time. We're talking probably minimum of three years out. That's what we've talked about. We know it all takes time, and, and really, you all are the ones that it's all centered around in terms of negotiating with waste management. We have the possibility of the existing road, you know, being returned to waste management. Is that what they want? Do they want something else? And it's all gotta come from, from your level. The landowner, one more time, we've talked to him, and he's amenable. It's gotta come from you all, and I mean, you all are obviously hold the purse strings. You gotta be onboard. We've talked to, I had a conversation with Bernie Walsh of Walsh Trucking. He's onboard because his company is directly affected by it. And so he's onboard. I don't know if he's onboard from a fiduciary point of view, but he thinks it's a, a good idea to do it. So we're just really kind of getting the, you know, trying to put some of the stakes in the ground that need to happen. Dewey's done tons of work just to, that started many years ago, and he's just built on that. So from the, from the citizens advisory committee, we believe it's an important step that really needs to move forward for, for this, for the site and for the people. And the road committee agreed.
The road committee's in, in favor of, of moving forward with, with your support.
Right, they voted unanimously to support it. They believe that it's an important thing to, to do. But, so that's why we're here, is just to potentially get the ball rolling.
And, and the, the next step is, is we need to get a meeting with at least one member of the court, waste management, the landowner, myself, maybe somebody from advisory committee and from the road committee together to try to negotiate what are, what are next steps on.
Right.
I've got an option on here to, to do, to do a patch and a repair. To do a patch and repair.
At the existing road.
Of the existing road. If we can convince waste management that the new road is, is the best idea, that we, we fix the road and then see if they will put some of those funds or all of those funds into building the new, the new road, which wouldn't be quite as big of an impact on the, the court and.
Where's the, where is the, the amount that we set aside? Where is that currently at?
It's, it's in.
Do we have sitting from waste management?
Right now, in waste management, we have one million seven hundred and thirty-five thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-one cents. This is as of February 20th.
Got it. And can you remind me, I can't remember off the top of my head, about how much comes in per year?
It, it, it's all by tonnage.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all.
I was trying to remember if it's like, because I was thinking, you know, if you're building, it's at one, you know, you're basically short a million, million five if you put in the survey work. So I was curious, like, how much, because the, the bill's not gonna start for at least another year.
How much more?
How much will come in during that period of time?
That's, that's something I, I'd have to get with, with Nathan.
Okay.
To get those, those numbers, that's.
Because it's pretty, I mean, really, it's pretty we're pretty close, I mean, relatively speaking.
They, they.
Financially.
They were putting in just to cover, and then you gotta remember that taking the maintenance out to keep Cedar Springs up would reduce that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I did ha, I did have a conversation with Alan Anderson from, from Waste Management, and he is, he's onboard with it. He thinks it's, and he so he's willing to take the next steps of having conversations with the court. So that's a positive thing. You know, it seems like everything, maybe the stars are lining up to actually get it done, because everybody has been very, very positive about doing it. We've, we really have kind of avoided Union Pacific, and we don't, with the new, with the new road, we wouldn't even have to deal with them. Because the road would actually come out around any property that they might currently own. And so there would be no sort of trying to deal with them, because they are difficult, as everybody probably knows, and so.
They're kind of non-existent.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah, yeah. What do they care, right? It's like, they don't care. And so that's a positive as well, is that, that Dewey would set up the road so that we are not, we don't have to deal with, with them. That's a big, that's a big bonus, and so.
I know, because I think they exhausted every other idea of going around it the one way.
Yeah, we have. We, you know, yeah. And there really aren't any other options.
And I'm really worried that people try to beat that train. I'm worried somebody's gonna.
Right.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, the only good part about it is the trains are moving fairly slow, but, yeah.
Right, and you know, we know that there's difficulty, you know, the arms go down, nobody's out there that knows it, you know, it's like, it's just an ongoing battle. And I was stopped not too long ago, a couple of weeks, at the first crossing. I was coming into town, first crossing, I was stopped, the train was moving. I thought, oh, this is great. Won't be too long. Got up to the next crossing, the train was going by. That's how long the train was. And so that's just, that's, I mean, it's, we want the trains. We want waste management. So it's like, how do we make it work for everybody?
We'll go to waste management first, and then you, Denny. Go ahead.
Um, the other thing that everybody needs to really be aware of too, is we think of customer agreements in terms of emergency services coming throughout there, but that would just alleviate.
Right.
Train move, and it would just be, it would be so much better also. The stuff that, and those, plus staying on, I mean, there's just a lot of.
Right, right. There's, there's not, nothing negative about doing it at all.
I've heard that somebody gets hurt or a big fire.
Fire.
And you can't get through, but I, I was, I went out there and showed all my firefighters how to get through the rail yard.
And that's another, that's a safety concern itself, because there's people that are working in the rail, rail yard and like. Yeah, yeah.
Well, you have to get drivers that get short on hours.
Right.
Get hung up.
And that was one of the things that Bernie had said, that he's had his drivers stopped there, where then they're not able to make another trip. You know, so that affects their overtime, that affects all sorts of things, so.
Service.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a win.
Denny, you had, you had.
For benefit of the public, does somebody know us in very rural terms, how is the chain?
Basically, Denny, if, if there is a first rail crossing off of Highway nineteen, the road were just geared to the left and just parallel the railroad tracks all the way around to where they end up there, and then tie back into Cedar Springs.
And we're back into Cedar Springs.
It was tied back into Cedar Springs. Right there, kind of, there's a, there's a hump right there.
Close to the Kimways Building.
Yes.
To be out at the end of the redway.
Yeah.
Would it be west or east of Kimways?
It would, it would be west of Kimways. And then there would be another road that would loop back into Cedar Springs for the, the landfill traffic, the Walsh trucks, that, so they could go back in and put it aside.
So, so would that eliminate the traffic that, that, that goes currently on Cedar Springs to Kimways? Or if I'm trafficking on nineteen, I get off and I'm headed to Blaylock, I'm gonna come back in west of.
West of, of, of Kimways, yes.
So really close to the Kim, to the Kimways Building. So is where you're gonna come in, before you get to, like, Cedar Springs. So that's where it, and it essentially would just circle around and come back in, and that's another agreement that waste management has to have, is they would need to build some new roads to, to potentially accommodate.
Go in and out of sight.
To go in and out of their site, but it's really not. It's not, it's nothing much. It just parall, parallels the existing rail line.
Sure.
Circles the end of that rail line and comes, just shoots directly over to nineteen, so.
What, what does that do to the rail spur that just crosses on the, on the west side and runs out on, I think it runs out on the Hosaples property or something?
No, it.
It, it goes around that.
It goes around.
It goes around the end of that.
So there will be no rail crossings whatsoever.
Right. Zero rail crossings.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's the goal, is zero rail crossing. So, and that's where we, we have to go out far enough to circumvent U.P.-owned, Union Pacific-owned property. We'd have to go around the end of it far enough, which is only a matter of, I think, about five hundred feet or something. It's not very far. So it really doesn't impact anything, but it avoids having to deal with Union Pacific, which is a positive.
So the existing road would just go back to waste management?
And they could do with it whatever they wanted, if they.
Well, yeah. Yeah.
I'm hoping to say, yeah.
My, my, my hope.
That somebody lives out there.
That, that as soon as the, as soon as the new road was built, we would go in and pick up all that old asphalt. I recycle that. I, I have, I have a home for it, so, yeah. We would, we would go in, once the new road's built, I'd recycle it, use it on another road someplace.
Right, so that might be a negotiation. If waste management wants it, then they, they would have to take ownership of it and maintain it. County will no longer maintain it, of course. County will no longer maintain it, of course.
Yeah.
So that's part of the.
They get it.
Yeah, I would, I would just assume that that road will weigh.
Right, I agree with that.
And then Waste Management, they'll put a rail spur on it. I'm certain they will.
I would think they would.
It just makes sense, especially if they're gonna start getting more trains that, that give them more room. But, but now there's, there's another hiccup is for the resurfacing of the road. If we can, we need to have a meeting as soon as possible because we're going into bid season and the contractors are starting to get busy. There's a lot of big projects and everything. Um, so we need to get with Waste Management to decide, do we do this? Which is the, the grind and resurface, or do we push, put this on the shelf and go huh?
And do your other.
And yeah, yeah.
Do a chip seal.
Do the chip seal option.
To, to get it to last for, until the other one comes into actual use.
Make that call.
Yeah.
Yeah. So um, I mean, I'm, I'm supportive of moving forward with those discussions. I hate to cut you on the spot, Leah, but since this is gonna be a project that is past my tenure, I wonder if you would be, that does again, you're not having a conflict um to be the number of people that is engaged in these conversations, because you will be here as they're building in those upcoming years, for sure. Um, and then I would say, it feels like we could at least, at minimum, as we're writing the budget, do we put a placeholder in your budget for at least the survey work for this first year, right?
Yeah.
And then that can get moved, moving forward um in the, in sort of the upcoming fiscal year. And then that will hopefully also allow you to kind of refine cost estimates for two fiscal years from now budget, uh when you go to write that.
Where you're, where you're at in, in that agreement with Waste Management is obviously the eighty-twenty.
Yes.
To make funds that are there now.
We're, right.
Manage and travel those.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes.
And I think that um, you know, Danny's question kind of prompted me, maybe, remember when we used to do road tours and we would, I'm wondering if maybe we shouldn't schedule like a work session and maybe the road committee could come with us as well and any members of the public where we just put everybody on a bus with you.
Sure.
And then anybody who wants to see that could go out and you can kind of show them where we'd be, because I think the public's gonna be interested in.
Totally.
Exactly. Just question, where's the road gonna go and all that kind of stuff. So we can work with you. I know we're starting to get into your busy season, but um.
It's always busy.
Yeah. But maybe we could find some time, because I know, especially people on this end of the county are probably curious about what the actual plan is.
Right.
For some people can read, can look at a map and say, oh, I get it, but other people prefer it actually.
I'll, I'll try to get some flags stuck in the ground.
Perfect.
So you can see the, the, the two entrances and.
And I think previously, we just used a public transportation, one of the public transportation vans, and we just had like a meeting spot here where people could get on the bus and ride with you. So.
Oh, sounds great.
Let's work on getting that scheduled, Denny. And we can invite road committee and if the um cap members want to come too, that's great. Um, but then that way, if the public has questions, they can hear directly from you where it's gonna go and actually see it in person. So we'll get that on the books.
Okay, great.
Okay, good. Thank you for your time.
Great. I'm excited. He's been being wonderful.
Yeah, us too. Yay.
One of your guys have wrote us.
Right. Got that right.
Okay, I'm only put to you, Leah, to figure out. Do you want to do a three?
I have the private.
What's your schedule look like, Leah?
For you.
And she'll give you a call off line.
Let me, let me, you know, let me talk to Todd and find out what.
Okay.
After that.
All right.
Yeah. Cause we might need to use one from down here. Well, there is a, is there a bigger one down here?
There's a fifteen passenger.
And then the one from common. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Nope. I have my maps and all my stuff, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. I'll get with you.
Okay.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Good job, Dewey.
Yeah, thank you.
And then do you want to stay up here? Uh, seven point one is consider approval of application for activities in county railway and RBC midstream.
I'm going to recuse again for the complexity interest. My wife is a project manager.
All right.
I don't know if those fellows are online.
Yeah, hi. Uh, this is Reed Baumgartner with PFC Midstream. I, I have uh my colleague with me, Lee Terrill, our construction manager. We're, we're joining uh virtually. So thank you for the opportunity to join today.
All right. Good to hear from you guys.
So Dewey, do you? Who wants to start? Who wants to kind of explain what's going on and what we're considering?
The information has been coming in sometimes slower, sometimes pretty fast. Uh, I just got this stuff this morning, printed it off. Uh, so it's something I, I really need to visit with uh the guys. Um, but are you guys still planning on coming this direction next week or the following week?
We, we are. In fact, uh, we would like to come up next week. We'd be happy to visit with you if you'd like, Mr. Kennedy.
Yes, yes. That's, I think that'd be a good idea. Um, I met with uh um the person from Waste Management this morning, kind of going over your schedule, your project and stuff like that. Um, I don't know if you guys are aware that your, your schedule was set up right during our wheat harvest down here. That, so I didn't know if there's any flexibility to maybe make some adjustments in your uh um right-of-way clearing and topsoil and your ditch work. Or if, if there's any flexibility at all in that.
Oh, you're muted.
Then, no.
Thank you. I, I yet to figure this stuff out. But uh, Mr. Kennedy, there is some flexibility. Um, if you have in mind, you know, when that crop season is and your harvest season, uh, we can absolutely take that into account.
Okay, July is, is normally the month for the north end of the county for harvest. Sometimes, sometimes, you know, and depending on, on the fields that are in crop. Um, I, you know, I don't know for sure. You, you guys probably have multiple crews, don't you, coming out? You got a grubbing crew and then you got a ditching crew, or how, how do you do this?
Uh, let me let Mr. Terrill speak to our, our process out there. He's, he's uh, he's done a number of these across the country and he'll know this one.
Okay.
You're on, uh.
Yeah.
Leah, you're on.
Still can't hear you.
Here it comes.
The darn technology.
What?
Okay.
All right. So I was joined on my phone.
We can hear you now.
Okay, great. Thanks. I had a, now I have echo. I apologize, guys. So yeah, what we would do is go out and, and clear the right-of-way and kind of prepare the area for construction. Um, and it, it would be one single contractor that would come out Dewey to kind of cut the right-of-way and, and cut ditch. Um, the ditch contractor might be a sub of the main contractor that we use. That all kind of depends, but it's all kind of managed under one umbrella. If that is.
Okay. Well, that, and that might be something we might just need to just adjust the, the schedule. Um, that will keep, that will keep the landowners happier about the project than uh going in there and, and uh, and tearing up their, their wheat crop.
Right, right.
We can do that. Mr. Kennedy, are you thinking the beginning of August or that timeframe?
I would, I would think if you wait until uh August before you go into the fields, I think there you would be safe. Um, there's gonna be areas that you can work um that, that won't be farm ground, but um, that's, that's one reason why I'd like to meet with you guys and actually drive the project and uh, and look things over and, and give you some options.
For sure. That'd be great.
Okay, uh, and that's, that's really the only thing I have other than, you know, the working in the right-of-way. Is there gonna be any, I guess, revenue come into the county for, for, I guess, impact to my roads and stuff? Or what do you guys, do you have anything on the books for that?
Or, are you talking about like a, a road use bond, Dewey?
Yeah, something similar to that.
Sure. Absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, cause uh there's portions of this project where you're gonna, I don't know if you're crossing the roads, if you're born underneath. Um, if you're gonna be trenching what, I know uh this portion of Birthhold Road, uh, the pipe is gonna have to go right in the road. Because there is no, there is no ditch. There's, there's nowhere for the pipe to go unless you go out off of the right-of-way onto private property.
Right, right. Um, and I'd like to get a uh, a contractor up there with me as well next week to look at that and kind of discuss our options about that one particular spot. You and I discussed this a few days ago also.
Right. Yeah. So those are, those are my only thoughts or concerns on the project.
Okay, we, we may need a little uh additional workspace in certain areas where we actually are crossing underneath of county roads. Um, again, we need to do our pre-survey work to determine those locations. I'm working to schedule survey right now. Um, I forwarded you a copy of our one-call ticket that kind of shows all the affected utilities in the area. Um, I think we have a response from all affected at this point. We're still waiting on a couple more. But I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to mark those utilities before we go out and survey, because that's gonna determine, you know, exactly which side of the road we're on and where we cross as well.
Right, okay.
At the end of the day, you know, our, our, our goal here is to not impact the roads. You know, we, we, you know, we understand we'll be moving uh along and carrying some equipment, but you know, in our experience, we, you know, we, we take every measure to just avoid any, any kind of, any damage to the roads and congestion to the extent we can and move through here quickly to minimize the impact.
Okay.
We can look at that further next week when we, when we um look at the worksite together.
Okay, perfect.
So on the application, Dewey, do you want us to give you some time to connect with these guys and make sure that you're comfortable on the schedule and on any impacts to the road before we sign off on this? Or do you?
Um, yeah, I would, I would prefer to meet with them first.
Okay.
Look at the project. Um, I, I don't foresee any, any big obstacles, but at the same time, um, like talk these, these gentlemen face-to-face and have them look at the project and them step back and I, I imagine they've seen a lot worse than what we've got up here to offer, but uh, yeah.
Okay, so then, um, so then what we would do is go ahead and uh table this until the April third, April third meeting, I think is our next one. And then that would give you time next week hopefully to meet with them. And then if something happens and you need more time, just let me know.
I, I don't, I don't foresee that, but I, I'd just like to at least look at the project with them and make sure they don't have any issues and, and make me feel better about signing it.
Got it. Did you have any questions to you, Martin, Leah?
Um, just wondering about the compensation. How they're gonna.
Yeah, and that, and that's, and that's something we'll.
Perfect.
Visit out when they're here.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, okay, so we will, uh, we will reschedule this particular one for April third, if Dewey has a chance to meet uh with them and get all those issues crossed and I have thought it. Um, and then we'll bring it back. So thank you guys both for joining us and um and I'll get you an answer soon.
Fantastic. Thank you, Judge Campbell, and Commissioner Shannon, and Commissioner Watkins, and Mr. Kennedy. We appreciate your time. It's so helpful to have the online um minutes to go back and look at the um, you know, past meetings. I, I unfortunately I missed that one, but I was able to get caught up to speed based on your reporting. So thank you for the transparency that you guys are doing business. It's just, it's really nice. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, okay, let's move into seven point two. This is discussion regarding the joint proposals for auditor service.
I just can't remember. I think the last year they transitioned from the old firm. So, and I think at that time, we, we found it to process to.
Yeah.
So I just think it'd be to maybe go out for RFP and see. And I think we, how many years have the auditors audited?
So they can, this, for the history, the original firm we brought on board uh in twenty nineteen, so right after I took office. Then the partner who is now working with us split from that group. So we've stayed, we stayed with him because the shit happened at a time that we couldn't go back out. Um, and so we just, we just transitioned the contract, basically, the existing contract over to him. So it, I mean.
I mean, I don't know how soon we have to, you know, have them approved and have them on board, but I, I would like to go out and see what's out there.
I would recommend um putting it out as soon as possible, just because there is a shortage uh of auditors. And so we want to make sure that we have enough time to actually receive enough bids and select one that's, you know, or carpet county.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we probably, I'll go back and look, but I'm guessing they, they would have put it out in twenty eighteen, because I think we approved it like one of the first meetings after I was sworn in. So they may, that still may be in our files someplace as original documents. And we can just update them and ask the procurement attorneys to look and make sure that we've got it on all the steps in place. Um, but yeah, we even put that together. And we'll release it and then we'll bring it back when we actually have bids then for us to look at. Okay. Um, okay, we'll do that. And then Pat, you had added update regarding House Bill four thousand and two.
Yeah, I was at the uh Health Human Services Summit Monday afternoon and for those who don't know, House Bill four zero zero two and five two oh four are fixed to ballot measure one ten that went through short, short session. And during that process, it was kind of a emergency time that came up in a opt-in request for funding to stand up deflection, which is a new program that's coming with this legislation, which offers basically set up for law enforcement when they are dealing with an individual would have the ability to direct them into deflection or to siphon um with a credit.
So deflection definition is like treatment?
It's, it's uh, it would be, and there's some issues around what that looks like. That's why I want to bring it to court, get you up to speed in what all that means. At least a high-end view of it. But deflection would be the opportunity that could enter treatment without being charged crime. And the officer, the way their, the way the legislation was thinking, that would be something that law enforcement would make at the time of that interaction. I can tell you now that most law enforcement agencies in the state are not very comfortable with making that call, that assessment. So there's some resistance. Been twenty-three of the thirty-six counties opted in. And we are opted in for the funding because um Kimberly Lindsay reached out to me from our um, Beaufort Hillside, asking that we make sure we were on the table for that. And at that time, they had some specific people they wanted, specific members of the community they wanted involved in that, one of them's law enforcement. So between her and I and, and Sheriff Bedcore, we got the opt-in put in place. But what's going to happen in the next few weeks, probably, the way the funding is coming out, they've got fifty percent coming out right away and then fifty percent later. And, and so within two weeks, we're gonna have to apply for grant. And it has to be applied from by the county. It's not gonna be through the health, the behavior health. It has to be submitted and the county has to make that application. We'll have a very short time, we'll, we'll go to do that in maybe two weeks. To get that submitted and I'm not sure how we're gonna feel that. We'll make sure somebody here is feeling that when it gets here. It's really gonna be who we are in a long time.
Yeah.
We're not getting, you have to get into a lot of detail on that.
And that just fell right straight through to community counseling?
Part of the county. And then somewhere in this process, we can use some of that funding or part of the reason for that funding would be to, to do a plan for how we stand up deflection. And I will um work together with those parties, IDA needs to be involved. There's four people, there's a law court, there's the DA, mental health or public mental health. mental health or public mental health, and the county can have to be involved with that. We need to bring corrections into that too. We need corrections into that piece too.
You know.
So that we have a, a meeting on how that's gonna work. And the problem that Gillum County has in particular, in my mind, as I'm working through this, is is probably something we want. I mean, we probably want to run it through mental health. Kerry wants to take the North Guard, doesn't want his officers involved in that decision. So I threw out, yeah, a money that that's kind of where we're at in preliminary discussions, but North Coast, West End is and CCS is east of us. So there's some logistical concerns. I wouldn't know if they're concerned with sure things we have to think about how we get prepared to hear with an individual who won deflection. My initial feeling is that there'd be very few people that will go in deflection. But Kimberly, would you like us to have uh a system in place so it can be real?
Mm-hmm, okay. Um, so I think it sounds like maybe in terms of applying, I mean, all, I'm on those emails too, and AOC will probably fly for us.
Back, Kimberly's gonna be very upset. I don't think Jerry cares. But um he, he's on.
How long will the window be open?
It'll be a short, maybe, I mean, we may not have a court meeting in between. I mean, I don't know.
So the consensus of the court is for me to go ahead and put the, the grant in? Okay.
I think so, yeah.
Go forth and, yes.
And they're going to, somehow they're going to fund that similar to what they did burn instead of going to our um mental health provider, though, to the county and then we will put it where we within our plan where it needs to go.
Okay.
That plan's gonna have to decide a lot of things.
Do you know the funding yet? Do you know the amount of the funding yet?
I don't know. They're, they're supposed to get that to us in the next few days, exactly what Gillum County's funding would be. They'll have that. Criminal justice was putting on the presentation about it Monday, and they're working on that piece because they know that's really the next step that we need.
I think the legislature gave the big number, but not either gonna do the.
Thirty-six counties in the means. Part of the whole thing was to figure out what kind of financial impact each county needed in that process because obviously the mobile county needs a lot more than we do.
Yeah, part of it too, I think, is there was the option to opt in immediately. There were counties who did not opt in.
And they're leaving a bucket of it.
Who may be coming in at the eleventh hour saying we wanted to, so that may impact how they set up the formula and release the funds. Then did you have something?
Yeah, is that like a pure grant money or is there matching funds that we have to give up? So it's a no cost. Gillum County is into transportation, probably, of the people to where or.
Could all be in that program.
Okay, the whole program.
Right, because the sheriff's office is gonna be picking those people up anyway. It's just whether we're paying the bill or the state's paying the bill for them to do that.
Good question, Pat. So do you, you think, you said that you don't think there will be very many people who want the collection? I think they'll just.
I think that because, because the way this legislation even got put into place, seventy percent of the voters in Oregon polled would have repealed.
Oh, I see.
Ballot measure one ten. This was an effort for the legislators to keep ballot measure one ten in place for the reason they think it's important. And there are some important reasons to, to the measure, original measure, and a lot of it's about treatment and recovery and, and how you get people into it with the cost of putting that infrastructure in place. Because we don't have treatment centers, we don't have staffing to staff, and we don't have a workforce. All of this is part of out measure one ten that, that what happened is we got mess.
Yeah.
Huge mess. And how do they fix it now and right now? I mean, a lot of the stuff I've talked to them about is man addiction happens really fast, and treatment happens, recovery is really slow, and they're so far behind the eight ball. I don't know if they can ever catch up, but this is a step in the right direction. And it does put some teeth back into it for law enforcement because you can at least put a six, a six-month hold on an individual to get them out of where they're at and get them started down to a path to a better life.
Okay, okay.
Okay, well, I'll be looking for an email and uh I probably will be calling Kimberly anyway to help you some of it.
The one thing, one thing I would say is that in relationship to Gillum County, because we're not part of it, I mean, there, there's a commissioner from Clackamas County, Ben West, Commissioner West down there that has been just screaming at lobbyists and legislators because he's a nurse in Clackamas County. And his message is, what are you gonna do, son? How many dead bodies you want me to walk over this month? We don't have dead bodies in Gillum County, but we've transported some overdoses already. Fender's here, Tina's told me, we've got it here, it's in the community, and we're only a minutes away or days away of having a death problem in the whole life of it. One death and two thousand people is a lot. And that's what, it's coming, not here yet, but it is coming.
Right.
Uh, anything more questions about what's happening with that one? Ken, more to come on that one. Okay, um, let's move into announcements and next meeting. Next meeting is gonna be April third, uh, this should be twenty twenty-four, I don't know how that twenty twenty-three. Um, it will be in the uh courthouse, I think. I think the contractors will be mostly wrapped up. They're gonna be doing some punch lists that week, but um hopefully we're back in business in the courthouse. And um so Pat, have you got the one?
Um, well, my, my and the kid meeting after the last court meeting and then um had a transportation AOC meeting on the AIDS and also a Korea um board meeting. Was in Salem on Monday for all the committee meetings with AOC.
Do me a favor, hopefully, stop patting that thing on your face.
She can't.
Every time.
All right. So I was in, in Salem at AOC on Monday, the eleventh for committee meetings and the, the legislative meeting and board of directors and uh went to the soil water conservation annual meeting on the twelfth and uh was like I said, Monday at the summit meeting in, in Salem for the Health Human Services Summit meeting. And then yesterday in this building upstairs, we had the strategic plan with McKed in our movement from uh greater eastern Oregon economic development district and mid-courney, Denise attended, and Jed was there. Uh, or incorporating our strategic, us into their strategic plan, had conversations about that and gave uh Jessica information to move forward with that project. And then, and you're today, I do have a board meeting in the morning and a McKed full boarding, board meeting tomorrow afternoon.
Yeah, what do you got going on?
Um, I went to the Condon Can meeting on Monday. Um, last Friday, I went on a road trip with Todd and um Eileen, and we picked up the two new vehicles.
What's that one?
Got to go to Federal Way, back. And so they're excited to get those. Todd's working feverishly to get them all licensed so that he can get them on the road as quickly as possible. And I've just been doing other little things. Um, Deileen and I are gonna try to hopefully streamline the budget items for the public health a little better. Um, and then we'll get together with Nathan to make those changes. And I just would like to say thank you to Miranda and Rachel for their service and their willingness to stay on and be the Friday club later after they take their new position and help us along as best they can. I appreciate their, their professionalism and everything that they've done for us since they've been here. So, thank you.
Can I say something just really quickly? I just want to separate myself from the comment major and public comments. I want to thank you for the opportunity and you have just been so wonderful to work with. I know it's my last meeting and I'm thank you for your leadership and the opportunity.
Yeah, I agree. It's been great working with you guys and I'm honestly frustrated that this county continues time and time again to out in the public say how are the reasons why I'm leaving, but I've not had one single person come and ask me. And I don't appreciate that. Uh, I feel like I've worked really hard to do a lot of things around here and for people to make assumptions without asking and then stand up in the middle of a meeting and include me in that. It's frustrating to me. So it's time for me to move on.
Yeah.
Wait just a minute. Okay. All right, so um.
I would just like to add, it's been hard to keep the pissed off coming out.
Yeah, me too.
Um, and these guys have since Deileen's departure last year have had to wear more hats than their own. They've had to take on other duties, so I think having, even just having the duties they originally had and then piling that on top of it was another added.
But that's not at all. I want to make it clear because the rumors going around that that's why we're leaving. We were happy to work with you folks. We were happy to take it on. We were happy to pitch in and do what was ever was needed. It's when we start to be publicly criticized and rumors are spread about us and we're slandered and community meetings, that is just too much for me. And so I want to thank you for your leadership. Our leaders don't have to proclaim their leaders, they just lead, and you've done, all three of you have done a wonderful job.
Thank you. Um, thank you, God. I'm gonna miss you. Um, but you're not gonna go very far, right? Because we have questions. Um, I have your number. Okay, uh, as for me, some updates. So we are um in the process of finalizing the agreement with Wheeler County for planning services. These are gonna be temporary. Matt Davis is uh an angel, God sent whatever you, whatever adjective or uh noun you want to describe him, but he has already started reaching out to landowners. Um, so far, everybody who has uh contacted the planning office in the transition with Michelle's departure has been connected with Matt. He's just needing us to actually sign the IGA in order for him to officially serve as the planning director. And so right now, he's just gathering information basically and um but we should be rocking and rolling hopefully later this afternoon, as soon as I get the IGA back from Judge Morley. Um, so they were doing that today. Yes, they were taking it out this morning. Um, so we, uh, but landowners were connected with Matt on Friday. So he spent Friday and then Monday and Tuesday of this week kind of connecting with them all so that they know that their applications are gonna start moving forward again. Um, so that is good news. Um, I had a second conversation with Carla McLean over at uh City Boardman about the long-term um sort of idea for planning services. Uh, the city boardman is on board with moving forward with those discussions. And so we're doing a lot of the preliminary. Um, there's a statute that says we have to have a planning director designated, and so I'm getting confirmation from legal counsel and Department of Land uh Conservation um that uh we're able to designate Carla without her being an employee. So it's just some, some really technical things that we need to make sure that we're following the law on. Um, in terms of service level, currently, right now, what we're talking about is obviously for Arlington folks, having the planner being, sitting at Boardman is actually probably gonna be a much closer drive than getting in the car driving to Condon. Um, so I'm anticipating, at least for folks in Arlington, that service is gonna be easier and quicker to just go to Boardman. Um, but for the South End, Carla and I initially, what we're talking about is them having a planning person in the courthouse uh one day a week now, um, which I think is great. And that will address for South End if they want to actually be in uh face-to-face with the planner. Boardman accepts all of its planning applications online, so people don't even have to come in. They prefer to um just do as electronic means they can do that too. And uh, and of course, the nice thing about it is they are co-located with our building codes. And so that correlation between building codes and planning um is a lot smoother because all their staff is sitting in one room over in Boardman. So um, well, obviously, we've got a lot more to work out cost and all kinds of things. We are tentatively, um, and I wanted to make sure that I'm not getting out in front of my skis too far. Um, assuming we can come to an agreement on um the fee and uh and those service levels that I just talked about, uh, we are aiming to have an, uh, an agreement placed by July one so that we can each budget for those funds to be transferring through. And um, and then that will ensure for Matt that um he is actually, I think I mentioned running for county commissioner over at Wheeler County, so he definitely wanted to make clear to us that he's willing to do the, the favor, but I'm not sure, like, whoever the next planning director would be, would want that. Um, and so we want to make sure that we've got a good uh plan in place to be able to transition that out um for, uh, so that we don't have a break in two months. Uh, actually, uh, Clint is not rerunning, and so he's gonna run for uh an open seat um in Wheeler County. Um, super nice guy. I think the landowners have been, the feedback has been already very positive, their interactions with him. So um, so that's going smoothly. We've got a good plan in place and um books are being handed off now. Um, and then I will have more as Carla and I kind of hash out the details. I wanted to just make sure that that July first timeline seems okay. And then the service level of one day a week, which is actually more than I thought they were going to suggest to us, um, is sufficient.
Well, I don't think we know that, but.
Yeah, I mean, I would say.
I think it would be okay.
Based on the applications and the way people are communicating now, most people pick up the phone or email. So I'm anticipating that most people are going, if they've got a question, they're, they're going to do that. And then those who prefer to come in person. Um, one thing Carla wanted to make sure we were thinking through is that the other, the, the admin staff we have most likely sitting in the county courts office, just because of where the offices are gonna be knows how to direct people who are coming and looking for planning so that they can be connected in real time so that they're not coming in and sort of wasting a trip in. Um, and so most likely, we'll just train the admin staff to put them on the phone with the Boardman planners. And they can sit down and we, we can make a computer available if they want to fill out their application while they're sitting there, if they have a question. So we'll kind of work out those details once we have staff um to make sure that training is happening so that we don't have folks who are missing the connection um in the building. And um, yeah, so that's going smoothly. Uh, I was in uh Salem as well for AOC uh last week. Seems like it was a longer than last week. Um, let's see, um, the nine-on-one board uh met last Tuesday. We are still without a contract with the union, uh, the newly formed union, so um, still working on coming to an agreement on that, um, which means that we are still short uh dispatchers, uh, kind of critically short. Um, uh, let's see what else is happening. We are, Amy is gearing up um for this summer work experience uh program. So we're working uh employers in the next week or so should be getting a um invitation to fill out a little, quick little survey, just letting us know if they're interested in participating, how many kids they can take, just giving us a general sense of what the kids would be doing. Um, and, and then Amy is sort of plotting out her timeline, but I think we'll be in the schools, um, probably in, I'm guessing by early, late April, early May to talk to the kids themselves about submitting their applications for the summer with the hope that we'll have kids placed in um just as soon as school is, is wrapped up for the year. And so early or mid-June, depending on each school district's uh last day of school. Let's see, we are moving forward with budget um that is going uh actually Rachel is working on for, for her last day, um, working on doing some electronic budget sheets this year. We've had some problems in the past because they were all handwritten with not being able to read people's handwriting and not being clear on what they wanted on their worksheets. So this will hopefully streamline that process so department heads can get us their numbers and we can input those directly um without having to circle back and, and I can't tell you how many times I've had it. and without having to circle back and, and I can't tell you how many times I've had a department director show up at my office saying this is not what I put in my budget, um, and us having to fix and rebalance, like, after their original budget document had been drafted, so hopefully we can eliminate that, um. I wanted to flag, since I talked about this last time, Avinry's, uh, pursuit of a red zone exemption for repowering. Uh, wanted to let you know that that is not coming back in any time soon, uh, what Avinry failed to disclose during our last meeting was that they had already sold the power on Leaning Juniper two to Amazon.
It would be that.
And, uh, so, and they were imploring about future projects, and basically what I've told them is that the red zone is like, they've hit the cap, the, the Montech Solar has already exhausted the cap in the red zone. And so, um, if they wanted to ask for it, they would need to come back to the court and have the court re-designate a red zone. They don't have anything that's currently in the pipeline that they would be coming to ask us for, so most likely if they did ask, it would either be later the share or a future court that they came to talk to.
So which project did Amazon?
They bought Leaning, Leaning Juniper two, the repower.
About the, the power purchase.
But not one? No, I was thinking that it's.
It's the one that's gonna be repowered right away.
Okay, so it's the one that's more south on.
Well, it's south of Thron Ransay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so that, there's no follow-up for that, I'm just gonna leave that in an exit memo for the next court to deal with, um, because I don't think there's, I, I'm, it did sound like they had anything after Leaning Juniper two that was far enough along.
And frankly, it does not make sense doing in my opinion, any tax planning program for a repower.
And I conveyed to them that, um, that very thing.
They're gonna pay more to put that project then than what it will cost them to not give them tax management.
I had told them if they, uh, if they were interested in seeking a red zone, they had some work to do with the taxing districts. Um, and so I encouraged them to start there and talk about what they have envisioned, and, and to make their case to the taxing districts first, um, so uh, I would expect if they do move forward, the taxing districts will hear first. And, um, and have a chance to weigh in with them on your own feelings on having your taxes diverted, um. So, uh, but that was, I mean, Chet and I have been meeting with them, and that's basically, the men, and Rachel was there too, actually, and the message that we delivered was I, I don't think there's support for, um, for abatements on repowers. Uh, the idea is, we incentivize the initial investment to make it pencil.
To get it here.
To get it here, but once it's here, um, then it's on the company to make it, so.
And none of the rest of them have, have asked for that when they repower.
Both of the developers, no, the counties aren't really in good position, and it's not gonna, and it's competitive for developers too, so.
It is kinda funny to talk to them, though, they have, it's the same playbook, and so they're simultaneously telling Chet and I how all of these federal incentives are coming out. And how it's competitive, when what they mean by that is everyone's entering the market, and so that means they have to sharpen their pencils, and I'm like that sounds like a you problem, not a Gillum County problem, like.
Do you realize they get a, a tax, federal tax credit? Because we're within the range of a coal-fired plant? Ten percent?
I'm sure.
They do.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's right off.
They don't tell you that.
They don't tell you that, that's right off.
But I do, I, I do enjoy when they tell me, the, the federal government is giving away a lot of money right now, which means we have to be competitive with in the market, I'm like, that's how markets work, I'm sorry. We're not gonna make, we're not gonna balance your multimillion dollar thing off the tax abatement, I'm sorry, but anyway. That is not gonna be coming back to the agenda for Leaning Juniper, at least. So just wanted to give you that update. Let's see, um. I think we already covered where we are with staffing. Um. Let me just see what's happening next week. I think that is it, um. Feels like there was one other thing I wanted to tell you, let me just double check and see if it's in the pending. Oh, this was important, we are moving forward on the lease agreement uh, for Arden Mills and the Green Lab, I wanted to let you guys know, this is a it's a process, so the leases come back from our legal counsel, it's now sitting with the insurance agent to make sure that the insurance provisions are okay. Next, it'll go to the EDA, they have to sign off on it before we can sign it, then it'll go to Arden Mills.
That'll take a year.
Then it'll come back, so right now we're on step two, but John will get back to me, I think, today, um, with the insurance, then we'll go to EDA, but I did.
Yeah, it'll take a year.
I did loop in Wyden's office already, um, to try to expedite. So they know it's coming, they gave us all the provisions they wanted to see, and Lori incorporated, incorporated those in her draft. So hopefully, um, and they did, I did tell them who it was, and they said, oh, this looks like it's gonna fit perfectly, so fingers crossed that it's not a forever, um, getting back from them. But I wanted to let you know, it is moving along, but the delay is that I'm dealing with multiple people who have to sign off, um, so we've got, I, I'm hoping optimistically it'll be on April third, but probably not, so. Anyway, that one's moving forward as well. And, oh, other piece, uh, the sheriff's office, um, so we, uh, I think we're pretty close to having drawings back from Vernon, um, right, for the Sheriff's Office North. Um. Gary, I think Gary will, if we want him to, Gary will come and talk to us about it, do you, do you want us do you want him to come back and show you the plans, do you want us to put it out for RFP, and then we can talk about cost and plans, or how, how do you want us to proceed?
I would like it to go ahead and RFP and then bring it back, and get set to speed and while we're out.
Okay.
And what do you think with it?
Yeah, because we're, and, and we have some kind of a long-term lease with the fire department.
I, or that would be part of the discussion.
Okay.
So right now, they were just doing, but here's the initial drawing, can it work? Kind of thing. And then assuming that we wanna go forward, we would, we would put out the RFP, because I, at this point, don't know what we're even talking about in terms of costs, so before we sign the lease, we probably wanna see what the potential cost is gonna be, which is why I need to get some bits back from people. So if this sounds okay, we'll, we'll put out an RFP for the construction, we can bring that back, assuming that you guys are comfortable with the cost, then Gary can talk to um, the North Fire District about signing the lease. And then you guys could, we could award the bid, then, after the lease is in place, but I think we, we don't have a, I mean, contractors always get like, well, imagine X number per square foot, but you don't actually know until you put the bid out what it's gonna be, so, um, so that's how I see his next steps, but I wanted to make sure that we don't need Gary to come back and present the plans first, okay?
And it sounded like the fire department was on board for having the building occupied.
I think they're happy to not have it be vacant.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, if, if we can make it work financially to upgrade it.
They're still gonna use a bay and something.
Yeah, yeah, there's some stuff, Dana.
Oh, I just had, uh, just one, well, a couple comments, first of all, um, you guys, I have no idea what rumors you're talking about. Okay, if rumors were, okay, the coroner going over my house would have to pack a lunch. Okay, so I have no idea, um, what rumors are going on. But one of my concerns here is I noticed that you have listed here the Honkers Nest. Okay, um, and I listened to that exchange on March sixth between you and Honkers Nest. And I found it heartbreaking. Um, now, I know they've gone through some renovations, I've never seen a renovation go smoothly. I've never seen one where they didn't find mold or leaking plumbing or whatever, it's kind of to be expected. Okay? But I also look back at some of the records for Conrad Child here. Okay, and Liz, it just seemed to me you couldn't write those checks fast enough. And I don't have a problem with that, because the children have to be taken care of. But I do think that the children that are just as important as the children in Condon. And I would like to see, find a way to get that young woman uh, some additional grant money and not take it out of her operational expenses. Okay? She's trying to take care of children, so please look into that and find a way, because that exchange was heartbreaking. We're talking about childcare.
I don't want, thanks. Okay, um, let's see, other than that, I think that is all that I have, so, anything else for the good of the order? If not, it is meeting, I will adjourn the meeting.